Good evening. Welcome to the December 17, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to request that you take your cellphones and please turn them off or put them on mute. If you would, please stand and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat. The applications heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations on these applications will then be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision on the items. The individual items or bills will be introduced at the Monday, January 12, 2015 County Council meeting. I see we have a quorum. Will someone move that we open the meeting?
Someone?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the public hearing and the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, the year 2025 master plan for St. Charles County, which includes the year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Just as a roadmap for the evening, I will read each application into the record. We will then ask our staff for their analysis and recommendation. Then the applicant, if they're in the room and they wish to do so, may come up and explain their application and answer any questions that the commission may have for them. After the applicant is done, we will then open up to the public where anybody in the room that wishes to speak on that particular application may do so. Then, after the public hearing is closed, we will invite the applicant up to answer, resolve any of the issues that were brought up then. We will then discuss the matter openly before the commission, before you, and then we will vote on each application. And our recommendation, like I said, will be forwarded then on to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision. And again, January 12, 2015 is the date for their first reading on these bills tonight. And anybody that does wish to speak, please fill out one of these speaker cards here at the front and place it in the box up here so we can have record of your notes. All right. The first application tonight is Application 24919. The applicant is Joe Brazel, the owner, Grapevine Wine Bistro and Visitor Center LLC. The applicant requests zoning change from A Agricultural District, 5 acres minimum lot size, to C2 General Commercial District and a conditional use permit for a boat rental and leasing and a single-family residence. Property is located at 2894 South Highway 94, on the east side of South Highway 94, approximately 300 feet north of Fifth Street. The property is approximately .3 acres in size and is located within Council District 2. Steph?
Thank you. Okay, area zonings include, to the north is C2 General Commercial District, to the south is Zone A Agricultural, to the east is AFF, which is Agricultural Floodway Fringe Overlay District, and to the west is C1 Neighborhood Commercial. Area land uses include Wine Bistro and canoe rental and a vacation rental home to the north, to the south, and west are single-family residences, and to the east is the Katy Trail, and then agricultural use further to the east. The 2025 Master Plan calls for the area to be developed as agritourism. I mean, reviewing the rezoning change, Steph finds that the C2 zoning in this area is consistent with the area zonings. We have the C2 zoning to the north, and we have the C1 zoning across Highway 94. There is also industrial zoning further to the south in Defiance, near the intersection of 94 and Defiance Road, and some other commercial districts. So the heavier commercial and industrial zonings are all on the east side of Highway 94. On the west side is where we have the C1 district, and that makes sense because that provides a buffer to the residences in Defiance. So Steph is recommending approval of this zoning change to C2 because of this area zoning, and also it does conform with the master plan. The agritourism notation in the Future Land Use Plan calls for uses that encourage tourism in that wine district area. That district in the zoning ordinance has a 40-acre minimum lot size. None of the parcels in Defiance can meet that 40-acre minimum lot size. But we find that this use is consistent with that type of zoning. So we are recommending approval of the zoning change. Relative to the conditional use permits for the residents and the canoe rental, we have canoe rental that we approved probably three or four years ago to the north. He wants to move that business to this property. So it's just a continuation. It's already a business that's in the neighborhood. And the single-family residence, it's currently used as a vacation rental, and it would remain as such, and so we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is subject to the following. Number one, an engineered site plan must be submitted to and approved by the Community Development Department. All construction on the site shall be in compliance with the preliminary digital flood insurance rate maps. The entrance to the site shall be in compliance with MoDOT requirements. For no conditional use shall be in active use until such time as all conditions of approval have been met. In any case where a conditional use is not in place and in active use within two years from the date of granting and/or in accordance with the terms of the conditional use originally granted or subsequently amended, then without further action by the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or the County Council, the conditional use or authorization thereof shall be null and void. One thing I forgot to mention, currently the property is not shown in the floodplain on our current maps, but the new preliminary maps does show it in the floodplain. And we have to take the latest and greatest information when we issue permits, so he'll have to meet all of the floodplain regulations. And as far as MoDOT, MoDOT gave us comments that Highway 94 is shown on the thoroughfare plan to be future right-of-way of 100 feet in this area. MoDOT did not indicate that in their letter, but I had email conversations with the gentleman from MoDOT. And the reason why he didn't put anything on there was because that the house is currently within the setback that we'd have. But in the future, or any other improvements that go on this site have to be in compliance with the setback of half of the right-of-way plus the 25 foot, so 75 feet back from the center line of 94. There was just the one letter, and that was from MoDOT. Any questions with staff? Thanks.
Thank you. Is the applicant in the room?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. Can you raise your right hand for us? Right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Joe Brazel, 601 Stone Ridge Lane, Augusta, Missouri, 63332.
Go ahead.
Can I hand you these brochures?
Yeah.
You guys may or may not remember when I came in here, I know some of you are on the board. We bought the house, the first one is 2886. Bought that, I don't remember, '05 or something, Bill? And it was pretty much falling apart. Windows were all broke out of it, and it was a mess. And we rebuilt it, me and my wife rebuilt it. We lived there for a while. It was Zone C1 since '92 or something like that. We bought it, it was already Zone Commercial with a conditional use permit on residential living. We lived there for about seven years. I built a shed in the rear of it. That was a detached garage. And so anyway, we lived there, and we made, the front building was a salon. Then after we moved, it's a grapevine wine bar and visitor's center. And the building behind it is a shed where we started the Missouri River Excursion business, this flyer here. And last year was our first full year. And the house next to it, the smaller one, the subject property, is a two-bedroom vacation rental as well, where now we rent the two houses to weaken winegoers. And it's been pretty busy. We rent it frequently. The wine bar, we've expanded, that satellite's pretty old, Jan, but...
Yeah, 2012.
Yeah, there's now a big patio off back, and there's a canopy and all that, and there's a parking lot just, you know, up north. And then the acre across the street, that commercial lot, we've got a five-year lease on that for additional parking as well. It doesn't show there on that satellite photo. So we have plenty of parking now. We expanded the patio out towards the shed, and, you know, you don't know when you do things like that, how to place things, because we didn't know what we were going to do. So basically, the patio faces the shed, the building. It's just a very bad view. It just doesn't look right. And so my wife and I, instead of just tearing it down and getting rid of it, we thought, well, we got that plenty of property in the back, so we want to just move the shed over to that property there. And then the access won't be necessarily, I mean, I'll work this out however, when I spend building permits, but I moved the shed, the access will maybe entrance in one off of 94. There's already driveway in a parking lot behind that house. It doesn't show that, but there already is. So the access will be either from 94, where there is access already, it's already approved through MoDOT, or by where the shed is, there'll be an access point that way. But whatever Community Development tells me I have to do, I'll do. But I'm just basically just moving the shed over one lot, and that'll be the canoe rental place. The canoe rental place, that was, last year was our first year. It was successful for the first year. We rented canoes every Saturday and Sunday. I have a van with our emblems on it and everything, and, you know, we're fully insured and all that. We take people to Klondike Park for a half-a-day float trip, pick them up in Welden Spring at the reserve there. That's a half-a-day float trip, or a full day is Washington, Missouri, and pick them up at Welden Spring. So it's some of the things we're doing down in the wine district to enhance tourism, bring people down. So that's basically what it is. I'm just moving it over one lot.
Any questions for the applicant? All right.
All right, thank you, guys.
We will now open this up to the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this application, please feel free to come forward and do so. Seeing none, we will bring this back before the commission. Thoughts, comments, suggestions?
I will make a comment in support of this, because as you all know, I'm from Defiance, and I think it's a plus, no negatives. I am in favor of it. I'll make...
All right. We'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second. Is that a motion to approve both the rezoning and the conditional use?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Ellis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Paulie?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Settle?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Motion is approved 9 to 0. The next application on the agenda, Application 25013, applicant Richard Azar, property owner Richard and Sheri Azar. They request a zoning change from A Agricultural District, 5 acre minimum lot size, to C2 General Commercial District and a conditional use permit for automobile and truck sales. Property is located at 1319 Highway N in Forestville, on the northwest corner of Highway N and South Point Prairie Road. Property is approximately 3 acres in size and is located within Council District 2. Steph?
Thank you. Okay, the subject property and the adjoining properties are all zoned A Agricultural, and surrounding land uses are all single-family residential. The 2025 Land Use Plan does show this property and the intersection to be developed as commercial in the future. And the property has been zoned agricultural since 1959. In reviewing, first of all, the rezoning request, Steph finds that the property is located in this commercial area on the 2025 Master Plan, so we are recommending approval. We recognize that there aren't any other commercial uses right in that area, but in the future, Highway N is going to be relocated, I don't know if you can see the green line up there, but Highway N will come from Buckner Road to the south, join up with South Point Prairie Road, and then as it hits South Point Prairie Road, it will loop on around up to Highway P. And so that's proposed to be a five-lane road. The existing Highway N, from this point to the west, will only have an 80-foot-wide right-of-way, which is probably a three-lane road. The big right-of-way that we talked about the last couple of months on Highway N, that scoops up and around to South Point Prairie Road at this intersection. So his site plan has been amended, and I think you all got a copy of that emailed to you in front of you tonight, does show him meeting the setbacks for both of those future widenings of, or right-of-way, future right-of-way acquisitions on those roads. Okay. Relative to the conditional use permit, Steph has looked at the use of used car sales at this location. We are okay with that. We have plenty of land to buffer the use from the adjoining residences and things, and we find that we can put conditions on it that will meet that. The used car use may be there for 20 years, or it may be there for five, depending on how development and the road improvements go in that area. So we are recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. No work on the site, including demolition of the structure, grading, fence installation, or parking of vehicles, shall be done until a site plan is approved by the St. Charles County Community Development Department and all proper permits are received. Two customer/employee parking must be provided and signed for the public to visit the site in compliance with Unified Development Ordinance parking regulations. No vehicle inventory will be permitted in those parking spaces. All parking areas on the property must be paved and striped. An alternate dust-free surface, six inches in depth, may be approved by the Director of Planning and Zoning, provided that surface is maintained free of weeds and vegetation. Four, all signage on the property will require a sign permit from St. Charles County Planning and Zoning Department prior to installation. Signage must be in compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance sign regulations. Lighting shall not obstruct or interfere with travel along Highway N or South Point Prairie Road or cast upon any residential properties. Vehicles displayed for sale shall be parked in a manner that each vehicle is independently maneuverable. Seven, a commercial occupancy permit from the Building Department is required to use the existing residence as an office. Eight, a new driveway permit from MoDOT is required for any new driveway located on Highway N. Nine, stormwater treatment shall be required for the purpose of collecting, storing, infiltrating, and/or filtering stormwater runoff from the first flush of rainfall, especially from rooftops and from parking and vehicle storage areas before it is discharged off the property. Ten, no conditional use shall be active until all conditions of the approval have been met. Eleven, in any case where conditional use is not in place and in active use within two years from the date of granting and/or in accordance with the terms of the conditional use originally granted or subsequently amended, then without further action by the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or the County Council, the conditional use or authorization thereof shall be null and void. And we did receive letters from Ben Branch, Henry and Ann Roblick, Richard and Sharon Karaz, Darlene Griswold, Dwayne Jeffs in opposition, a letter from Martha Pittman Garrett in support, and letters of comment from MoDOT and Brian Niederschmidt. Any questions with staff? Yeah, Gary?
A couple. In the last couple of years, we've had a lot of rezoning issues along N, and most of them have been negative comments. You mentioned one thing, and I think I've asked this before, but you said that MoDOT is going to be expanded to five lanes. What is the timetable and funding, or is that just pie in the sky and we really don't know?
There is no funding at this time.
So that's, may or may not happen.
Right. On our thoroughfare plan, we plan the thoroughfares in accordance with our land use needs, our housing needs, to the year 2025. So if the areas develop as low-density or medium-density residential, if those areas develop as we show on our map, then those additional housing units will necessitate the road improvements, and then that will begin. If things stay slow, then that's not going to happen. But, yeah, everything on the thoroughfare plan directly reflects to the land uses shown on the land use plan.
And as I prefaced before, most of them, these developments along N have been negative opposition. We have one support. The other three properties, nothing's developed, it's just zoned. But this would be the first actual commercial...
Correct.
...if it goes through to fruition. I have another question on condition number three. All parking areas on the property must be paved and striped. Is that for actually the cars that are being sold, or is that for people coming in and looking at cars? I guess, let me rephrase it. The people that are, are the cars that are for sale, are they going to be on a paved, be required to be on a paved or gravel, or...
The Unified Development Ordinance requires that everything be on a paved surface. And the ordinance establishes that Robert, the Director of Planning, can approve an alternate dust-free surface.
So the inventory doesn't necessarily have to be on a paved surface? They could be on a gravel surface?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I am...
Is that right, Robert?
If they could condition that it all be on paved surfaces, and then Robert couldn't authorize the change, so, yeah, so if you wanted to condition that it's all paved, you can.
But as it's written here, is this condition, it would be up to your discretion, Robert?
Well, as the ordinance states, it's got to be a dust-free surface, and if it's not paved, they can make a request that alternate service be allowed. And I haven't seen any requests at this time, but I entertain it.
The site plan indicated one lot, I think one lot was going to be paved, and the other lot was going to be gravel, and so, but, but that's, I mean, however you guys want to do it. If you want to require that it be paved, you can certainly do that.
Okay. Any other questions, Steph?
I think it's important, when we're dealing with these properties out, where there's no public sewers or anything, that the septic tanks and fields be identified so we don't have paving that's put over the top of private sewage disposal system.
Yeah, and that's one of the requirements on the site plan that they'll submit to us, that they show us where that septic field is going to be. And then the Building Division can certainly give us comments if they need more fields for the use on the property as part of that commercial occupancy.
All right, thank you.
Didn't we approve a car lot of some kind at Hepperman and N this past year, or in the last two years?
At Hepperman and N, we approved a storage, vehicle storage.
Did that ever happen?
It hasn't happened yet. They were a borrow site for MoDOT improvements along Highway N, and we anticipate something coming in soon now, so...
Okay. Now, that was an RV storage facility.
Yeah, RV and boat storage.
That's right.
Any other questions, Steph? Thank you. The applicant in the room? Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Richard J. Azar, and my address is 1780 Penny Royal Lane, Wentzville, Missouri, 6 Streets 385.
All right, go ahead.
I'm owner of the RA Wholesale Auto Sales. I've been in business over 30 years. I held a automobile dealership in O'Fallon, Missouri, along I-70 with the Louis Auto Sales and the RA Wholesale for over 30 years, complied to all the zoning ordinances, never had a problem, always conformed to everything the zoning and the ordinances complied with, and recently sold that business. And I've always wanted this 1319 Highway N as my retirement lot. And I feel like I could, you know, make that place look beautiful and improve the property values along the area, and, you know, be right close to home. So that's my, like, my goal to, you know, so that's my goal, so that's what I like to see happen. And eventually I can asphalt the area, but I would like to have it under gravel for right now, and eventually get it under asphalt, you know, as I so, you know, and make a little money along the way.
Was your RA Wholesale, were you right at Bryan Road and Highway 70?
Yes.
And Louis was right up top?
Yeah.
I go by there every day and have for 40 years. The place was always pretty well-kept.
How many cars do you typically...
I plan on keeping about 20 late-model cars. They'll all pass the safety and emissions.
That'd be the maximum, or average?
Well, sometimes it'll go from 20 to 30, but I don't think it'll ever go over 30.
30's the max.
Yeah.
What are your proposed hours of operation there?
It's going to be like daylight hours only, from like 9 to 6, maybe 9 to 7.
I know we had some oppositions, which you'll probably hear from. What about lighting? Are you going to have lighting?
I have, there's two dusted ons on the property right now, as far as lighting goes. I really don't need lighting after hours. I don't want to create a, you know, an after-hour nuisance for the neighbors or anything like that, just basically a daylight hours business.
Have you talked to any of your other neighbors that are obviously here for some of your oppositions?
Well, Martha, she's right across, on the Penny Royal side, she's in favor of it, you know, and Keven, he owns front of it. He doesn't seem to have any opposition at all about it. Katty corner to it was Donna Robinson. She has no, I thought she may have a little bit of opposition about it. And Griswold on the inside on the right has opposition against it. But her property, to me, is not cared for properly. She has like 13 acres there. It's all growed up in weeds and trees, and, you know, she cuts the front of it, but it's all pretty much forest towards the back. I mean, it's, you know, my property's always been grass-cut, well-kept, you know, no trash. I mean, I always keep my properties very clean.
How long have you lived there?
I've had this 1319 since 1985.
How much volume do you expect a month, in and out?
My normal volume is between 10 to 15 cars a month. But I don't expect to do that right off the get-go there, because nobody really knows I'm there, but eventually it'll come back.
Do you have any proposed, like, the route for like test drives and things like that?
Well, normally, I always get the, you know, driver's license copy, and then they could take the car on the test drive wherever they like, to their mechanic, or down the road and back, you know, basically. I've always done it.
So, Richard, how much you plan on spending on this property? What are you guys going to invest on it?
Well, the rock and the updates and all that, I'm thinking around $5,000 to $10,000.
So you're going to use the house as your sales area then?
Yeah.
Okay. You're going to self-finance it, I'm assuming, then, if it's only that much?
Yeah.
So you would be opposed?
And then I'll improve it with the asphalt, or maybe even concrete, you know, eventually.
So if you're only going to spend that much, you'd be opposed to us putting conditional use on it, of paving it?
Well, you know, sometimes the pavement can become costly in the... Well, you know, sometimes the pavement can come, become costly in, in the beginning.
Right.
You know, but as I, you know, get it rocked down and then get the, get sections of it paved over, that's basically my goal.
Then have you done any demographics of that area? What kind of commercial traffic do you see coming in there? Are you, how are you going to get people to come there?
I've lived there for pretty much all my life.
Right.
And I know the demographics is very good, and it's getting better every year-
Okay.
-with all the growth, especially around the Wentzville area, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I love, I'd love to have that location up and running for a small used car lot, you know what I mean? It's just, I know I'm off the beaten path, but, you know, with the internet sales and everything that goes on these days, you know, it's just, I don't need that prime time property at my age any longer, you know, so I just kind of want to lay back and, you know, take it easy. It's kind of like my hobby, you know what I mean? Car business, really, that's all I've ever, ever done in my life, is sell used cars, so, you know.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Hammond?
Do you plan to continue to live there?
Well, I have the 1780 Penny Royal, which is right down the street. That's my residence.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah.
Anything else for the applicant? All right, thank you. We will now open this up to the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this, please feel free to come forward and, and do so. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Ben Branch. I live at 1363 Highway N, two driveways west of this property that he's talking about. Needless to say, I bought my property in 85, and I came here 10 years ago when he tried to propose this, and my opinion hasn't changed any. First of all, I guess if I would have bought a house where the car lot was there originally, it'd be on me or Hog Farm. However, I didn't buy a house or property with an existing car lot. And I guess the opposition is, needless to say, there's enough commercial property in St. Charles County because I travel it. If he's looking for a car lot, it doesn't need to be at this location. And I also talked to Donna Robinson, who can be here tonight because she's sick, but he said she had mild objection. She wrote a letter if she wanted to come tonight, but she's like bedridden with the flu. But she owns the property Caddy Corner, and she's definitely opposed to it also. And she has some of the ground, I guess, on the opposite side that is going to be commercial or whatever, but I wanted to express that for her. But mainly, too, the other thing, they just widened the road, which they've just done in the Highway Department. We've got enough problem with tractor trailers. When you ask, they're going to test drive the cars, you know where they're going to test drive the cars, they're going to test drive them on Highway N. I mean, that's, they're going to have to come out of that car lot, so that's just going to be more traffic, people test driving cars. And needless to say, I, I've seen how that happens. And I was the chief of Frynack, and I've seen how Uy Honda, where people complain all the time about test driving cars on Conway Road, private roads, turn around in your driveway. So if that's the best use for that, I would hope that this commission would, you know, protect the residents out there and, and really do some due diligence, because there's a lot of commercial ground that he could put a car lot at. And I'm not so sure his car lot now is out of business, so I don't know why he would need another one.
Any questions for Speaker? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Come on. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Gunnar Schultz, I'm at 1977 South Point Prairie, one driveway this side of his. We built out there three and a half years ago. I looked for two years to find a place, about nine and a half acres. I built a $980,000 house. This is my, this is where they're going to plant me. I'm from North County, I'm not moving again. It's just, it's beautiful out there. My neighbor's horses get out every once in a while, I see them on the yard. I love it. I had to point out to my wife, deer do not wear horseshoes. That's not a deer, hon. And that's what I want to see. And I'm not against anybody trying to make a living. I'm a dentist. I've had two offices. I know what it's like. But I bought commercial property, and I know what it is. You buy it by the square foot. You buy residential, it's an acre. I wish them the best, but maybe go into more a commercial area. I'd like to see that area, South Point Prairie Inn, stay, horse farms, large homes, lots, or, you know, just people on acreage, you know, take pride in their land, you know, that's all I want to see. Because I'm not leaving. I'm going to be there for all, hopefully, a long time. But I'd like to keep it pretty. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room that wishes to speak? Can you raise your right hand for us?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Greg Holtclaw. I live at 1225 West Highway N. We're just a couple of houses away from South Point Prairie. Not too familiar with the property because I, I just moved in like a month ago. And, and to get this in the mail, I mean, the whole reason that we wanted, we, we moved from Darden Prairie, just in Bainbridge, the whole reason to, to get, was to get away from commercial, is to, to kind of get a piece of property that we could, you know, settle on and, and have some space around us and not have to worry about light pollution or, or, you know, anything like that. So it was kind of a shock to get this in the mail, so, you know, just like the last gentleman stated, I, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with somebody trying to make a living, but, you know, it's such a beautiful place, and to have a commercial piece of property out there, you know, I think would just, would just kill it. You know, again, just really would like to see that stay residential for, for as long as possible. And we love that place. When we bought it, there was, you know, God love them, they, they had a lot of stuff on their property. We've been cleaning it up on, and getting rid of a lot of junk and things like that, and plan on building a, a home on the property. So anyway, I, I just would rather see everything kind of stay the way it is, especially in new. It's, one comment, I, you know, it would have been nice on the seller's disclosure to, to let us know that this was all going to be commercial at some point. It'd be nice to know that, you know, before you buy the property. So, anyway, that's, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Raymond Reiniger. I live at 2168 South Point Prairie, Forest Hill, Missouri, 63348. I'm about a quarter mile south of this property on South Point Prairie.
Okay.
Two properties south of Donna Robinson's. I'm not in favor of this. My first impression when I saw the sign for the notice for the meeting here tonight was it's not a place for a car lot, there's not enough traffic there. Most car lots are on a major thoroughfare along Interstate or the Service Road where his business is now or was. I just don't feel like this is a good fit for him or for any of the surrounding neighbors with this kind of business here. I realize things will change as time goes on with the development, but I also don't feel that $5,000 to $10,000 is enough to develop the property into a working car lot. We built our house in 1997. We acted as a general contractor ourselves, and with inflation and everything since then, I just don't see $5,000 to $10,000 being adequate to do what's required from all the things that I heard here tonight. So I'm here to ask you all to deny this request. Thank you for your time.
There's anybody else in the room that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, Mr. Azar, you may come forward if you wish to respond to some of this.
Well, just in the past few months, there's been over nine commercial properties, well, turned from agricultural to commercial along Highway N from 4061 all the way down to Highway T. I've counted about nine of them. Well, mainly, most of them were close to the 4061 corridor there on Highway N. Just in the last two months, three months, you've granted three that I could see commercial properties with the limousine service, the RV storage, and Ramos Construction. And the property at Hepperman Road on both sides now is commercial, you know, so eventually my commercial property that I, if you all approve, would maybe, you know, make a beautiful gas station or a, something corporate, you know, in the future, you know. And to me, right now is a good time for the commercial ends of things to, you know, go from agricultural to commercial. I feel like it's, you know, it's not going to hurt anything, because it's already coming commercial out through there. And on the county envision, she's pointed out that it's, it's already commercial. There's a red zone there at the Point Prairie and, you know, that shows it is, you know, commercial, so.
Any final questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. We will now bring it back for the commission.
I have, I mean, listening to the people objecting, it's agricultural, I think four things. I agree with some of them. I think it's not a good fit for the agricultural district right now. I think when I asked Jan about Highway N with the 2020 master plan, I think when that expands as a commercial district, but I think it's putting the cart before the horse. I think as a business, I think he's underfunded. And I think from the other neighbors that have moved out there and have investment in the property, I'm not in favor of it. That's my opinion.
Any other comments? Mr. Hammond?
I think, you know, eventually this area, it's, it's in a growth area, whether it happens in 15 years, 20 years, or 25 years. My crystal ball's not any better than yours, so I, I don't know that, that growth is going to occur in this area for, for, for at least 15 at the minimum, so I, I'm, I'm not in favor of this proposal.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll throw in my two cents. I mean, whether or not the, whether or not we think it's underfunded, whether or not we think a car lot will or, will or won't be successful, I, I mean, I don't think that's, that's our prerogative here. My, my vote won't be based upon whether or not I think a, a used car lot will or won't be successful, or, you know, I, you know, my vote will be based upon what is, of course, good for the, for the community, good for the neighbors, good for the, good for the locale.
And I don't know if it adds anything. I haven't decided how I'm going to vote, but, you know, I've saw his place for years, and he just has a few cars. It's not much more than a hobby. It's not Johnny Landau for when you drive down Highway 70 and you see the, the dealers and endless amount of cars. It's just a guy making a living selling a few cars he's got out there. So when you, when you say car lot, it's not compared to the one you might have in your mind.
I will, I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion?
To approve the-
Yes.
Is it a motion to approve the rezoning and the, and the conditional use permit? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Fromm, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
No.
Mr. Setley?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Ellis?
No.
Mr. McBride?
No.
I too vote no. The application is denied, seven to two. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from both the October 15th and November 19th meetings. Any, we had those sent to us. Any suggestions, comments, rewrites? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the, those minutes as read?
It's all moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any other items for the board? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay.